Good afternoon, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and get started. I'd like to call to order the August 10th, 2022, meeting of Committee of the Whole. President Wagner, please call the roll.
Fulton, present. Mr. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Here.
Dr. Mottabat?
Here.
Mrs. Wilber?
Here.
President Lindy?
Virtual. They're not here.
Okay. Lore's yours. President Lindy?
Thanks, Vice President Jones. I had just two things here. One was to just thank Vice President Jones again for this meeting and for the meeting on the first. I appreciate a great deal, the chance to spend some time with my family. I am back Friday night late, but will be there in person for Monday's meeting, and I'm excited to get back. The second thing I wanted to share also by way of thank you, I think I've now heard from everybody in terms of what you hope we can accomplish together by around Halloween time. We might extend that by just a week and a half or so so we could pick up Election Day. But either way, what we as a group can accomplish for kids together between now and about three months from now. So what you should be receiving from me no later than tomorrow, hopefully today, is just a summary of what I heard from everybody. And I'm trying really hard to have zero editorializing in it. Just here's where people are in terms of what they think is really important over the next three months. So part of the agenda at the beginning of the meeting on Monday will be to do some voting together on what we think is most important between now and about Halloween time. And I'll just say, you know, as people look through that, the last two times we've done this, there's been a significant amount of consistency across what I heard from everybody. Maybe some things on the margin where people had some different ideas. And just to, you know, manage expectations on what you're gonna get from me and what we'll vote on on Monday, there's just much more variation this time. There's just a handful of things that most people brought up independently, and then a whole series of other things, all of which could be really important, you know? And so I think in addition to fixing the air conditioning for Carolyn, we will... Just be looking for that for me. Now, genuinely, I want to thank everybody for either sharing some time by phone with me on this or sending me your thoughts by email. I really want to make sure that we are clear and intentional about what we think is most important. And what we think is most important reflects the deliberative body as a whole. So thank you. Those are my two things. Do we have the superintendent?
We do not. She's coming. She says she went to the restroom. Okay, so, but on the agenda of the four items, I'm wondering, just so we can continue and won't lose time, the fourth item is governance coaching updates.
Yeah.
Who's doing that? You or Brandon?
I think either way is fine, but we could totally start those now. Would you or Brandon like to take a first cut at that?
Sure. Sure. It's fun here. So everyone should have received email from Cindy detailing kind of what we were supposed to do and fill out. I think she actually made a separate Google Doc for each person. But to kind of detail out folks who we felt were the groups that we either should go to, which are what the outreach was, or should have come to us in a meeting, which is what the engagement was. I don't know if that was clear in what's...
Not at all.
Okay.
It was after I talked to you about it.
So you still have time to amend if needed. The other part too was another form that should have been like a survey form, Google survey, that would have gone through just kind of what you're expecting as part of the questionnaire that we would use at the discussions. What the next stage of this process will be is we have to determine just a time for us to be able to meet and set up our goals and guardrails for our initial discussion based on kind of what the feedback we received before during the superintendent search, as well as the other metrics that superintendent, right, will provide. And these are just, again, the ideas. These are gonna be student... These are goals for student achievements, student growth, student focus goals that we then would take back to the community in our discussions and be able to explain how, you know, what these goals are and give feedback, get some input and thoughts as to are there things that we have missed? Are there things that are not included in those goals? So my understanding, and I think we're still trying to figure out the right date to do this because it looks like it'll be a Saturday more than likely so that we can all be able to have enough time to be able to discuss it. But finding the right Saturday over the next few weeks doesn't always look promising. So we are working to do that sometime either end of August or early September. I think that's right, if that's correct, Ben.
Yeah, I haven't looked at the results yet, have you?
I have not.
It could be that there's a perfect Saturday that emerged. I just haven't checked yet.
I have a question. Did we include Jen?
Into the goals and guardrails part or...
No, to participating.
So it was only the board that were to fill out the survey?
Right.
Of information?
So...
No, for her being available.
Oh, for the dates of the availability? I do don't know that.
Well, let me clarify. The dates were... We... You talking about on the doodle poll?
Yes.
On the doodle poll?
Yeah.
Ben, no, I don't believe we did.
I included both Ironetta and Jen on the email. What I have to look up is whether I asked them to take it. I'll look it up. But please do. I think both, we would need everybody there.
I didn't take it because I didn't think it was for us. So I didn't take the poll. I know, I remember being on it, but I just didn't respond to it because I thought it was for the board.
Oh, well, I think it's kind of a date that works for... Well, Ironetta, tell me if I'm thinking about this wrong. I figured... You know, I can... I'm feeling torn on this because on the one hand, I totally understand the idea that goals and guardrails come from the board's representation of the community's vision and values. On the other hand, I feel like you have a really important perspective and opinion about what historical student achievement data trends have been and how we might measure certain things. And you would ultimately be held accountable for those outcomes. So my hypothesis was you would want to come. But how were you thinking about it?
I'll gladly attend. I just didn't take the poll because I thought it was getting the dates of availability from the board.
Okay. I just, yeah, I think if you can come to all of them, no need to take the poll. If there are some dates that definitely don't work for personal reasons, please do take it. And I think it's in for Jen.
Well, I think we need to clarify because technically, the goals and guardrails, the goals are from the board. Superintendent has an opportunity to interject her own goals based off of what the board determines. But it's not supposed to necessarily be influenced. The goals are not supposed to be influenced from the superintendent at that level. I'll gladly not come. I only made that comment because Ben interjected that. And so that's technically not where that superintendent's goals go into that.
I do think though, so part of what the goals and guardrails that we are supposed to be developing here are also built on the metrics that we would have. So like, some of that will involve us having to know what those metrics are, what those metrics mean. That doesn't necessarily mean that Jen and Ironetta might be a deviser of the goals. You know, they're not necessarily a part of that process. But there are some things that, again, understanding where our lens of what the district looks like and where we have to be may be helpful for their information. Again, may not require them to be there the whole time, and it may require them to be there in opening parts. Those are things that we might be able to figure out. I think the key might be first is figuring out if there's a weekend that folks are actually available because Saturdays are filling up quickly for folks and so...
Yes, they are. My vote is to put them in all of the process, but for the reasons because we've been through this governance together, we're not saying not specifically about goals and guardrails. Until Ben interjected that, that wasn't the reason that I wanted, that I was... But let's move.
So everybody fill out the doodle.
Yeah. Everybody fill out the doodle. And I think Kareem, I think there is probably a difference of opinion between you and me on this one. I think part of what Cindy was sharing in the meeting we had with Carolyn and Brandon last week was that, you know, one of the other things that Ironetta is working on is this maybe two to four-page summary of past student achievement trends. We haven't gotten that yet, but it's also not due yet. When we get that, I have a feeling people are gonna have really important questions that they want to ask about those numbers. And that part of the reason their presence can be really valuable is because she can answer those kinds of questions. But I do think in the short term, please, everybody take the survey.
Okay. Brandon, anything else regarding that? You might want, I just thought maybe we just say we've had two meetings as the designated sort of point people around that.
We've met twice, and we're gonna need to continue to meet weekly through the rest of this month. And then we kind of figure from there, we'll determine what's the necessary amounts and regularity of our meetings to talk with them about the process. I think one of the things that we have been able to do in those meetings as well is to recognize the limitations of time. And so we are trying to do this in a way that'll get it through the process so we have an opportunity to speak with the community, give them notice to be able to have those conversations with us, but also do it in a timely manner so that we're not sitting here seven months from now still at the same step.
Great. Thank you. Eve?
Yeah, thank you. Just a couple of things, just several points of clarification. I think it's important to have the administration be with us when we're doing some of this. Wanted to have a better understanding of the use of the Alma information in this front-loading of the process. Does that, I was unclear as to... Because fortunately, the Alma report got printed and I think sent to people and what have you. So looking at what they learned or we learned from that experience, we use it at least initially now as the way to help us figure out what the goals are or what the expectations are. How are we supposed to use the Alma information is my question.
So I think what we talked about is that we would use that information as we're developing the goals or, you know, again, the student-driven goals in continuous area, also with the measurements and the data that we have for the district. So we would use both to kind of derive what our goals would be. Both the input that we receive through the Alma surveys and the feedback we got then, as well as what we're seeing as far as metrics that reflects the district's performance. You need both. Like, you need both. You need both the input of the community as well as what we actually have as numbers now to be determined where our goals would be.
Exactly. And then another point of clarification on the student outcome piece. Instructionally, at least for most of my years here, I really do defer to, maybe that's because I'm an old teacher, you know, I don't defer very often to anyone since my parents are dead. But the reality is, over time, over time, I've, and I think I've even said this in this room many number of times, I would defer to the people that are doing the teaching and organizing the learning. I'm confused about and need better clarification maybe from Cindy and the folks about student outcomes. Meaning, are we, and in this room, and we spent time, are we suggesting that this district's goals, five or six or whatever they are, are limited to or expansive to student outcomes?
I think the idea is that every one of our goals should be something that is driven based on a student outcome. So if the goal is something, not necessarily the specific outcome, right? So we're not necessarily saying the goal is every student must have blah, 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 blah. But it is to increase this metric that is focused in, blah, blah, blah. Like, the goals are more amorphous in that sense. So not so specific, but they're really built around this idea that each of the things that we would do would be focused on first, how does this improve student performance, student outcomes? How does this affect the students within the school?
Hey, Eve, can I jump in for a second?
Go ahead, Ben.
Go ahead. Can you give me an example, Eve, of something you think should be a goal or might be an important goal that wouldn't be a student outcome?
Well, it depends how you want to interpret it. If we're talking in terms of financial sustainability or fiscal responsibility, I mean, you can, through efforts, obviously, connect that to student outcomes. But when I hear student outcomes, I'm hearing percentages. I'm hearing trends in achievement or growth. And I'm just saying, the degree of sustainability or fiscal responsibility, that's got to be a goal for a school district. So I'm just wondering, since we've said we're gonna, it's five or... I think they said five or six or something like that.
Five to seven.
Three to five, five to seven, whatever. I just want to be right. And if you look back at previous strategic plans, let alone guards and goal rails, and I've looked back to the one that was there when I first came on the board, it was, there's great specificity. And indeed, Great City Schools reviewed our first strategic plan that I was involved with. I'm just trying to figure out a way to holistically talk about goals and yet talk about student outcomes. I mean, one way to measure that we're doing well in outcomes may not be how well they've done the reading, but it might be our families joining us. Meaning, because the outcomes are such that, and right now, families are not necessarily joining us at the rate they once did. So I just need better clarification about that, but this is helpful.
I just think all these, I think it's a really, 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 really good question, Eve. And it's my first time doing this too. Part of what we'll get out of the Saturday is some coaching from Ray and Cindy. But I just, as a first pass, and then I get to Mike, you know, it might be the case that we could have a guardrail about the superintendent, you know, shall not run any, you know, budgets where the end of your surplus is less than blank percent of the overall spending. Like, we could play with it to get it right. But like, I think there ought to be a way in this process to capture something like fiscal responsibility because that feels really important. I can also hear kind of them saying in my ear, like, if the only thing that happened at the end of the year was that we balanced our budget, but kids' learning didn't improve, we wouldn't have done our job. And I think you'd say the same, you know? So I think there's got to be, there's got to be a meaningful way to do both.
I believe Mike had a question or comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to add my two cents to this. First of all, forever's worth. I don't know if anyone cares, but I also think the administration should be there when we have these conversations for a myriad amount of reasons I don't need to get into. I also wanted to kind of just add, lend some support to where I think Eve was kind of going with this. And I believe, kind of like we're the bear crap in the woods. I mean, we could literally take any goal we decide on and make it about soon now. So I don't dis, I think all of what we're doing is about kids. But I also think, like, the individual, when I hear student outcomes, I'm a teacher and assistant principal. I'm thinking of an individual kid. I'm thinking of IEPs for every students, which is my dream as people that have served with me on student achievement have heard. Every student has an IEP. Anyway, that's expensive. But I think of that. And this is just my thinking. I think of that student. When I think of my role, I think of district outcomes and every student. And so that looks like buildings, more offerings, equitable offerings on each side of town. Which, again, though, to Ben's point, I think, President Lindy's point, we could make the case this is about student outcomes. But man, this is probably a discussion for Saturday when we have our Saturday thing. But that's kind of where my head's at.
Go ahead, Superintendent.
So I think the only thing that I would add to the conversation, I actually think we were just making a funny around whether or not I come or not. I think that there is consensus in the room that my voice matters when it comes to kind of where we go next, even though the board owns the goals. I just want to add just the thoughts around outcomes. And so this is just my lens. Ultimately, everything that we do really could lead to improved student achievement. So if, when we think about programs that we put in place, we think about supports that we put in place, we think about activities that we do for students, when we think about how we use our resources, all of it is to remove the barriers that would keep children from succeeding academically. So when we think about it that way, then it does make the conversation around data. Because the data is not just the number. The data represents the students. It represents the population and where they are performing. So I just want to add that to the conversation. There are a lot of great things, and I don't know if Ben said this or Mike. I don't remember who just said. But, you know, we can do a lot of really, really cool things, and it's really great to do that. And it's fun, and it may be things that we continue to do. But ultimately, if it's not leading to improved student achievement, if students aren't learning to read, if they're not learning to do math, if they're not better writers, if they're not going to college, if they're not getting jobs and they're proficient in their work, it's still all for naught. So I think that, and that is a bit of, maybe a bit of a shift in terms of the way that we think about the conversation because we don't love what the data has shown us to this point. And so, and we don't support, and I understand why, even the setup of the Ohio Report Card and what's happened in terms of that. But at the end of the day, that's the measure that we have. That's the measure that we're using. That's what our students are bound to. And so we do both. So we give them really, really great experiences that are then aligned with and lead to improved student outcomes. And improved student outcomes for me means improved student achievement. More kids going to college, more graduating college-ready, more that are reading and doing math on grade level, more that have industry certifications so they can be gainfully employed when they graduate from high school, all of those things. So I just wanted to kind of add that to the conversation. Just, and everyone may think about it differently, but when we come back to the conversation with the council, you know, that may be something for us to talk through.
Yes. And for the sake of time, because we've spent almost 30 minutes on this topic. But just to kind of close out the topic of coaching update, I think it's important to note that everything people have said today makes perfect sense and is very important. But we're paying these folks a whole lot of money to help walk us through these kinds of questions. And so these kinds of questions, I think, at another appropriate time when they're in the room with us as we're developing our goals and guardrails, that's the perfect time to begin for us to ask these kinds of questions as well. And I know we need to kind of think it through and better understand it in this meeting. I really feel we need to maximize their time. And one of the things I have appreciated about the so far two weekly calls that we have had is that we're throwing some stuff at them in terms for them to consider and based on what we're hearing this group say. And we're having conversations and not always agreeing about it. But the bottom line is that we're paying them to help us come to an agreement about how we move forward. And it doesn't have to be strictly on what they say. It can be what we want to see happen, and we kind of expect that they are gonna help us make it happen. And so, you know, that's what the coaching part of it is for, I think.
I know you want to close it out, but that's critical because they, we want, if you will, and relevant to us and where we are, obviously. And then, you know, they may have a particular, and I think they do have a particular philosophy
They do.
of management and leadership and community engagement that may differ significantly from where we've been or whatever. So I'm sure there's a good marriage there somewhere.
Yes, I agree. I think there is a middle ground that we have to find. And...
Okay.
Okay.
So we, thank you, everybody. Well, then, I think the next two kind of go together. The monitoring for opening of school readiness and the preview of dashboard for data monitoring. We'll turn it over to our superintendent.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Hopefully, you're having a wonderful day. It's been a very, very, very eventful day for me. And so I'm excited, honestly. This is my first cow, so I'm excited. And so help me kind of maneuver through the process.
Terri said welcome.
Yesterday was my one day, though, so...
Yeah.
There's only one pronoun.
That's right. We, that's right. So wanted to just share just two pieces of information with you. Let's start with the other one first, the dashboard first. So we're gonna start with the dashboard first because the readiness surveys that we've done, I also have them being printed for you in hard copy so that you can see them in hard copy, not just what's up on the screen. So this is really small. I don't know if you can make it any bigger. So wanted to start with this one just because as we've had other conversations, we've talked, I've talked quite a bit about data and the data focus and how we're able to really begin to look at data, begin to work with schools so that they can look at data and what data we're measuring and we're monitoring. So during my initial transition, I really met with the data team to give them the vision for where we were looking to go and having data that we could review that would then be actionable. So this is actually in a site. It's not, it's not, they're not, it's not pictures. It's not a PowerPoint. This is actually in a site. And this is the, what we're calling at this point, the superintendent's dashboard. So in the data, we've worked with the team. This is the beginning. It's a work in progress, but I did want to give you an idea of what it was that we were talking about and how we were looking through it. So what you see here is a way, in a one location, for me and with the team and with schools to begin to monitor their overall data. So the data is set up by subgroups. It includes discipline, assessments, bullying, attendance, and enrollment, just to start with. From there, we do have the options to then go into, if you will, click Rob for me, schools. We can go into individual schools, select schools, select grades, and then look at how we are monitoring data across the periods of time. So we're also adding into it years so that we can then look at where we've grown, where there have been areas for us to focus. Why is this important and why did I want to share it with you? One of the reasons that it's important is there, I think there has been the request often, talking to, looking at the different committees and what the committees have asked for. There have been quite a few requests around data. And what I find in working with the team is they have pulled those data sets from different places. So oftentimes, when you go back and ask for that same information again, you can't get back to that same information because somebody else pulled data and they pulled it a different way. So this gives us something, one, that's consistent. But two, it gives a way for schools, as we begin to train principals on it, to look at their data, to talk about where they are with data, and to look at what they're doing around strategy. I talked in, even though we're, we're getting to the point of, of talking about approving the goals, the initial goals, at least for this year, for my evaluation, but I also talked about different dashboards, for example. So dashboards around work orders. While I'm monitoring that right now, every two weeks, want to have a way for the board to be able to see some of the information that we're looking at and talk through it, or at least see where we're getting that information from. So you see the kind of a setup, where this then goes is those other things that we begin to monitor as well. So work orders, on-time transportation, where we are with meals and meal service, so that it's not isolated. It becomes something that we're. So I just wanted to share this with you, if you'll go for me to the enrollment tab. Not fully populated, okay. So this gives us, this is enrollment for where we are right now today, in terms of, because it's live. This is where we are right now in terms of students that are enrolled in the district. Make sure that we aren't fielding. All the fields are off. So that's where we are currently right now, as of this moment, in terms of enrollment and what that, those enrollment numbers look like. So I just wanted to share this to start with, so that as we're preparing and getting into the school year, you have an idea of what we're looking at and how we're doing that work, and beginning to really move the conversation, so we're using data as a part of the work that we're doing, how we're monitoring the work, monitoring the work, and beginning to ask, to answer questions. So I'll stop, I'll stop there, but just wanted to share that to start with.
You have questions?
Eve has a question. Yeah, does, does the 34879, does that include our preschool enrollment, or is that absent? Sometimes it's included and sometimes it's not.
So based on, from, from what I have right now, and I didn't, I shouldn't, I probably shouldn't have gone to the enrollment tab, but from what we have right now, I don't believe that this includes our preschool enrollment, but we'll go back and double check. I think everything we did here was K-12.
And then you're talking in terms of those trends, how far back are we, are we going? I know our, our treasurer likes that, what's that, three years kind of thing, or something? Of course, our last three years for anybody has been difficult, but.
Yeah.
For families, it is.
So one of the things that I shared with the student achievement committee the other day was data that went back to 17, 18, as thinking about it as a baseline. And we know that 1920 is the wash. So essentially, when you look at all of the data, you have what looks like four years of data, because 1920, we didn't have data. And so as that, and, and that was sharing, so that as we then get to the point of sharing the data with the board, the whole board, as the board is beginning to, you know, begin to look at those goals and guardrails, we're on the academic side, academic, academic discipline and attendance, it's done with those four years in mind.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So that was just the sharing for that part. So I don't know if there were any other questions around that or any other thoughts.
I had just two superintendents, and I'm happy to go after others if people have things they want to ask first.
Go ahead. Nobody has their hand up.
Well, I, I just, I wanted, and I don't know if you would know the answers to these or not, but could, could you talk a little bit about how? Maybe you did say a little bit about this, but, but I was wanting to hear more about how similar or different this was to what CPS has done in the past. I've only been on the board for two years, and I'm curious what, what, what history looked like. And then the second question was going to be, in terms of like, can you just talk about, like, what did it take for this to get created? And like, were there people within the administration or your team who were particularly helpful? It seems like a lot of work, and were it worth celebrating? And I was just curious if there were some wins to be public about on that front.
So I'll actually start with my partner here to talk, thank you somewhat, to talk about what the data culture has been previously, and then I'll pick up and answer the second part of your question.
So we actually started dashboarding 2003, 2004 school year, and a lot of academic stuff, a lot of financial stuff. And this is just, it's kind of grown with technology. And this is a faster, newer, beautiful version of it, organized in a way that our N A needs it to help manage the district. So that's the history of it. We've gone dashboard crazy, every, almost every department's created dashboards. You know, I showed you mine during Michael's presentation. But it's a really quick, easy way. And if you look at the dashboard on a car, it's intended to say, giving you very fast measures about where you stand in a very visual way, so that you can react to it and make modifications. Is it time to get gas?
So I think one of the, one of the challenges has been, so to Jen's point, you have, you know, this is set up already. This is a part of the systems that we've already had. So you have Jen's team, of course, doing work with dashboards. You have food services that has done work with dashboards. Collectively, this did not exist. So there was not a dashboard that brought in together academics, behavior, discipline, nor were there dashboards created for those. So when you start thinking about the way that you ask questions, principals would receive daily reports that were Excel spreadsheets that had some level of data that you could go back and see were never opened. Because in looking at what they received and asking, send to me what principals are getting every day as we're beginning to ask questions around data and try to have data conversations with them, the data hasn't been, hasn't been formatted in a way that allows it to be actionable. So therefore, you have all of these spreadsheets, but who's doing the, the analysis to know what the information is? So I think that that's a part of it. This is the, the very beginning of what this will look like, because I, I was able to show the team where we were looking to go. I think many know, I'm, I'm a bit of a techie. So I was able to show them where we're looking to go. We don't know if this is the system that we'll always be able to use to get to that space, but at least it allows us to get started. So that would be, I think that that's the other part of the. The other thing is, in talking to the team, and I'm talking about the data team right now, and yes, this is a team that was already in-house, okay? That was really excited to have conversation across the board about how we could take all of this work and put it together. So it started with a full conversation around what it is that I'm looking for in terms of being able to look at data, why that's important. Then bringing the larger team in to have dialogue and even go to the next, that next level with what that looks like. So I think in pockets, you had people that were working in the, in the, in the different groups that really wanted to be able to focus on data, but there hadn't been a way collectively across the organization to do that. And principals, their, their access to really being, I, I, I won't, access maybe one, but their, you know, ability, you know, thinking about, thinking from this, from the lens of a principal, you, you, you're a lot more likely to try to use the data and make sense of it and move forward with the data when it's in a format that you can understand, that you can digest, that is, that you can look at different options, you know, that you can look at if there kind of scenario, so truly it does make the data something that is live, that you can work through.
So as the dashboard culture grew, and everybody was doing their own dashboard in different formats, it's hard to get it all together, then Jeremy's team decided to do an RFP, create one tool for all of us to join together, because what we really wanted to do is use the academic data in conjunction with the financial data to start that ROI conversation. So they did that, they issued the RFP last year, it was a great cross-functional. Jeremy does a really good job with that. And we have created dashboards that nobody has looked at. Because we weren't ready for that culture yet, but now we have a leader that's driving that culture, along with the financial side of the house and the technology side of the house, so really exciting.
Yeah, I was going to ask a question. I'm not a techie, I'm far, like, you're here and okay, right? This question makes sense, and I think you just answered it. I was going to ask, do we have, does the district have the ability to make those changes internally? Or are we developing something that's different that won't be had?
So, so I think it's two, I think, I think it's twofold. To Jen's point about the RFP, so we, we did do an RFP, but the entire RFP was about how to change, and I met, I've met with the team that won the RFP. We've not completed the work from the group that won the RFP, because there was not, and you can, you can correct me if, if, if I'm not saying this the right way. That process was all about a conversation of how to get people to engage with data, how to try to change the culture in the organization, so that the organization became a culture that was focused on data. They were not the ones that were building the dashboards. They were not the ones that were influencing the building of the dashboards. They were just around trying to get everybody to buy in to focusing on data. That's, that was their purpose. So that's what we were, that's, that's what we committed to paying the money to do. And I say it that way because this has happened in less than 100 days. This did not exist on May the 2nd, right? So the people were in place that understood what needed to happen. They just needed the leadership and that, that was comfortable enough with it to say, this is what we're looking for, this is why we're monitoring this information, this is what we're going to do with it next, this is what it needs to look like for schools. And now we're beginning to, after we get that part done, we can then begin to launch at the school level, so it becomes something that the schools can do.
Have the skill set.
Yes. Yes, we do.
I think combining it, just like in the meeting earlier today, where you, it's a more comprehensive look, and so it's not so fragmented.
Absolutely.
I think that's critical. And also, I'm going to be a little cynical about all of what has occurred, as we've spent millions of dollars hiring data coaches throughout the district. And so one was hoping that everybody was learning how to use data effectively with multiple contracts everywhere, other personnel and what have you. I've always been concerned about that. But I'm also going to say, and to the superintendent and to the treasurer's credit as well, I, I think there was not an interest or a willingness in previous times to share, make the information fully accessible. And I think that's a change of culture that will help us all. Because frankly, as bad as, as bad as, and as much as I hate the Ohio Report Card, we've been flying blind about what's happening in every building without it. It's so, it's, so I, I'm applauding the change of culture in, in the willingness to create something that's usable, accessible. And frankly, over any number of years, the board has always been steered away from knowing very much about individual schools. So, and I, and I don't want us to know that much necessarily, because that falls to other folks, but I'm just saying culturally, the finance house has kind of led the, the transparency piece and accessibility. And, and I just, I think this is very, very important.
I will also, thank you for sharing that. I would also add that, you know, it is, it is, people have different levels of comfort with different things. And, but I, I, I'm a proponent of you have, you, there is, it is impossible for you to determine, my personal opinion, so I'm giving personal commentary at this point. It is impossible for you to know where you are going, where you desire to end up, if you are not clear on where you are. So if we, if we work and we operate devoid data, and I'm talking all different types of data. You know, if you think about it, it's not just the academic data that's here. We're talking enrollment data, we're talking discipline data, we're talking bullying data, we're talking attendance data. All of those things matter when we think about the health of an organization, of an educational organization. All of that's important. So you'll hear me talk about data a lot. You saw it today when we had the conversation around, around the ad hoc committees. Because there is, we, we, we don't, we have to know where we are in order to be able to acknowledge where we are. And it's okay to be uncomfortable with where we are, but we're not, we're not looking to stay where we are. We're looking to improve because our children need it. I mean, those numbers represent kids. It's not just data, it's those, those, those numbers have eyeballs on them. And when we think about it that way, we have to have a way to make it bite-sized for schools. So if I'm going to hold schools accountable, a leader's accountable for the monitoring the data, to getting to the point that every child has a plan, and I think across a lot of school districts, we're almost there, even though we don't call it an I U P, we can talk about that later. But, but in order for that to happen, I will, I will guide them through it. I will show them how to do it. I will make it actionable and provide them support. But we have to have a measure to get started, and, and this gives us a starting place. So that's my.
Yeah, and I know we need to move on, but I just wanted to say, I wrote down on my paper, data drives decisions.
Yes.
And, and one of the things I appreciated in student achievement, which, which I, I think I verbalized, everybody probably knows this, that I've been struggling with student achievement since I've been on that committee, just trying to understand data and, and things that's given me. And I think when you came to that meeting, I even heard and saw you making the effort to really help the committee better understand the data that was presented to us that day. So I do think that it's important to place a lot of value in support and support in making sure that our data system is where we needed to be, because it's people like me who, who, you know, I just go nuts trying to figure things out based on what I'm being told. And, and not that I don't appreciate what people, where people have been with it, but it just, that meeting gave me a whole different perspective, because I was hearing you very clearly explain things that I couldn't interpret on my own. So I, I'm, you know, that's enough said about that, but, yeah.
Very quickly, because I've heard her say, be quick. So I, from a researcher lens, appreciate the data. What I've noticed in the, in the past eight months is that questions get asked, data gets presented, and then it's gone, and you'll ask the same question
Right.
two months later, and it's like, okay, well, you know, so that is very consistent.
Yeah.
And from, from my lens, that's very frustrating. I like to look at intersectionality. I like to look at discipline with respect to rates, with respect to gender, with respect to schools. And I think from an oversight perspective, that's, that's exactly what our role is. And this, this commit, the, the interjection of the data will help us as a board be able to communicate more effectively with the, with the public, because we've got the Young Academics Coalition asking us about this, this, this kind of data. We've got other organizations that are asking us about academics. Being able to pull those things up readily, whether we like the information or not, to your point, being able to have it consistently, seeing it over time, will help me in, in my, my purview. So I think this is a great start. You, you kind of happen to get more members now who are aligning with that, because that's just the way of the world. I think our kids, our kids need to be intricately involved in understanding data. They need to be coding, they need to be doing all, I think we're moving more towards a tech, a techie society as well. But being able to get this information and look at areas that we need to improve upon in order to effectively input goals and guardrails, to speak in that language, is just what we need at this moment, because at the end of the day, to me, everything is data-driven. How do we measure improvement by data, by a data and a time? And so I'm, I'm looking forward to being able to. And manipulate it, so please. I think you said that there's going to be a board member portal or something, that we can look at data soon. Yes, ultimately, so a part of my vision.
It's 447, and I just want to remind people of that.
Okay, I'll move to the next, I'm sorry. But, but a part of my vision is to have some of those high-level metrics, not that it would drill in and talk about individual student data, but high-level metrics that the board can actually interface with, can analyze, you know, can get in and click around if they choose to do that. But also having a part of that that's public-facing, so that there's certain information that you can go to our website and look at the data on the site, so that you get a picture, so that as the public, they get a picture of this is what we're doing and this is how, you know, we're looking at that information. The only thing that I want, and, and I was a little apprehensive to talk about this today, but once we, you know, once I put it out there, then I'll get questions about it. The only thing I'm asking is just to give us a little bit of time. This happened again since May the 2nd, it is a work in progress, but I am so excited. And I just feel, and the team honestly has felt validated as a part of it, because we do have the expertise to do this in-house on our own team. They just needed, they just needed, they just benefited from the additional leadership and guidance around the conversation for it. This is not something that takes a lot of time. I, I could have saved us some money on the, on the culture RFP, because this is not something that takes a lot of time, honestly, in changing culture. How does it change culture? Culture, you put the data there and begin to talk about it. And immediately, you know, principals, they, they, they want to have access, and they want to make it such that it's, it's something that they can focus on and they can analyze, but we have to put it in a way that's beneficial for them, so.
Well, thank you for speaking on this, on your first Cal, and we look forward to an update in the near future on Cal, so. Okay, Ben? Can't hear you.
It's the same.
I'm sorry. Superintendent, did you want to show more or talk more about the, I think it's coming around now, the school readiness one?
Yes.
Great.
It's the same, it's the same thing, it's just, there's just a copy for each person. So I think the most important part about this is for us to be able to look at the colors. I will go through what the other information says. But this is a new tool that we're using as a district to really analyze where we are with our opening of school readiness. So essentially, in the areas that you see that are, are red, that means based on the school's response, we're complete and ready to go. The areas of yellow are areas that are partially complete, and the areas of red are areas that we will be focused on. The, this is, the principals returned on the first, their first time complete. They, they completed, they completed their first one of these on the second. The second one was completed on the ninth, and the last one will be completed on the 16th. So let me just kind of walk us through a little bit how we're using this and the information it's providing for us.
The top row, that's all of the schools.
It's all the schools. So the top row, if you will, and this, just so that you'll know, this, this comes through, uh, uh, this is actually something that we built in terms of, and I say built, it's really just a survey, it's a district survey. just a survey, a district survey. It has the questions in it that we set up and the way that I wanted it passed was in the color coordinate just because it's easier for us to focus in that area. So the questions that are here ask us for, if you go to column D, is classrooms are set up and welcoming for face to face on the first day? The building is clean and ready for the first day of school is E? The building systems are where they are, so forth and so on. Are you able to read the first row?
Yes.
You are? Yes. I can send it to you an email as well, but I just wanted to.
Is there something missing on the second page? The name?
So it's, it's a long sheet of paper, so it goes with the first column, so that carries over.
So it goes like this.
If you take them apart, it goes, it's two sheets side by side, okay? So it goes through each area. Asset inventory is done, the building exterior is ready, cafeteria, it's your phone now for me, keep going. School service staff has been confirmed for the school. Arrival and dismissal procedures are in place, the school is fully staffed. So it covers every part of the organization. What's happening at the school site, what's happening, what's happening through operations and facility, facilities, what's happening with transportation. Once we get this information, this information then goes to the executive leadership team and they begin to interact around it, right? So in doing that, immediately, they, we, we talked about what that would look like. We organized it so that we would be prepared when principals came back so that it would give us an overall snapshot of where principals felt that we were across the building. But I think the most important thing about the tool is not that we spend time on what's yellow, what's red, what's green, but knowing that there is a process for us to monitor where schools feel that they are with opening day one readiness, that we're able to monitor the same thing at the leadership level and that we're able to work with our teams to, to get those things in place prior to our students coming back on August the 18th. So in thinking through that, I just wanted to share it with you because in the second column, so the first, and there are some reasons for some of those things, if there are areas that you have questions about, but the first column, for example, schools are ready for day one. Well, teachers don't return until Friday, the, the 12th, so classrooms won't be set up. So by the time we see this on Tuesday, then that column will be green for the schools. The second column talks about the cleanliness of the school buildings. And I think some of you, and I think we may have talked about it, but one of the celebrations that we've had over the last few weeks has been our process for monitoring the level of cleanliness in school buildings. And aligning across the, at the very least, our students deserve to be in a clean building. They deserve that. And we know that we've had some challenges, we've had some vacancies with custodians, but this is the time for us to make sure that we have it right for our children, you know? And so we identified the schools, our facilities team provided the list of where we are. That's one of the things that we monitor. Go to the school with the group, see if we are all aligned on what clean looks like, and then everybody goes out and begins, I mean, honestly, so the, the, the leadership can talk to you about it, but you know, when they were talking to the assistant principals about it today, because I have them to talk about the process, right? And when we were talking to assistant principals about it today, it's me, it's facilities, it's the executive leadership teams, it's the principal supervisors, it's everybody there together. And when we start walking and I share with them, when I look, I look at every single thing. And so the things that they pulled out, yeah, we're walking to classrooms and a lot of times we look and the floors are shiny, but when you, do we go in the cafeteria? Do we look under the things that are in the cafeteria? Do we go in the bathroom and look behind the door? Do we look behind the toilet bowls, right? Our students deserve that. And so there should not be a space in any of our buildings that the leadership in the buildings cannot go in. Because if you're not comfortable going in, then that means it's not okay for our children to be in those spaces. So that was the beginning of the alignment process and that's carried through. And I think that as you're, you know, you're beginning to hear some interactions, something that we will continue to monitor because this is, this is really important. Next year, we'll do the same process, but we will do before principals leave, get a snapshot of where they are before they leave, and then we will continue that work once they come back. So that way, it will be something that we'll be looking at throughout the summer. The, and I don't know if Jen wants to add anything to this part, or Dan, because they've both been a part of kind of what we've done through this. I don't know if you want to add anything or not.
It was super helpful because it's easy to filter, so I just looked for my two columns. I looked for yellow and red, and I contacted the principals and they responded right away. They said, how can I assist you in getting up to date? And they responded, they were very thankful that we reached, that I reached out to them individually. So we've been able to help address some of it.
I think it's great. Good luck on the cleanliness.
Yeah.
Mine too.
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead, Ben.
I think I'm similar, first of all, Superintendent, thank you for sharing this. I, the, the questions I have are real similar to what I was asking about the, the data dashboard, which was, can you, I, I, I don't know this, but how different or similar is this to what principals and schools and central office have experienced in the past? And maybe, maybe that's more for Jen, but I'm just curious to learn more about that. And then also, do you get a sense of what the reaction of principals has been to this setup? I'd be really interested in hearing about both of those things.
So I don't, from, from my feedback, and Jen can add, this didn't exist for principals in the past. I think that it was isolated, that different departments were following up with schools around what they needed to make sure that they were covered, but there was one, not one comprehensive way that that was then monitored at the district level. So for example, finance will follow up to make sure that schools had the requisitioner, someone to make sure that they were doing cross referencing for the timekeeping. You had EMUS that would send information out to schools to make sure that they knew who the testing coordinators were, building assessment coordinators, coordinators were. But, but I, it has not been shared with me, and I started asking that question probably May the 9th, and that was before we had the transitions, and we did not get to what had been done around it in the past. So I don't, you know, I'll defer to Jen.
So that's true. Each department kind of reached out. We did have a school opening checklist that everybody, their requests into, you know, make sure your, your kids are enrolled, make sure your master schedules are going. Who is your registrar and all that kind of stuff? The, the difference is, it was never collected, analyzed, it was, it was a Word document that they filled out and sent to somebody and then we never resolved or told. So then you started kind of reaching out to people, but maybe they were in trouble. Very proactive approach.
Thank you. I think the other thing that you asked was how were principals responding to it? And actually, they've responded very well. So last week was when they, we, we shared with them kind of the process, what they were, we do, what they would be doing and asked them to fill it out. We asked for complete honesty because it's really not about anything, there is no indictment against anybody for us to know what's happening in the building because we cannot get, make sure that we are prepared for our children day one if we don't have a pulse on what's happening in the building. So that was initially. By this week, when we met with principals, what their response was, was the follow-up that had already happened with them after they were looking at the information that was provided. So they knew that it wasn't just something, you know, we don't believe in just collecting information for the sake of collecting information. If there's not something that we're doing with it, then why do we collect it? Everybody else has something else they could be doing other than completing surveys. So they were, it was beneficial to them that they saw, okay, this, first of all, there's, there's movement, right? Secondly, to Jen's point, you know, someone's followed up with me because there were the concerns, and then collectively, it's not just the individual follow-up, we're looking at it as, at an executive level saying, okay, in this column, what's happening here, right? In this area, what, what's going on here? What you provided for me is this, what the principals are saying is this, what do we need to do differently? What support do you need from me to make sure that we, we quickly move from yellow to green? And so it really becomes a conversation around engaging everyone in, in the work and what we're doing there.
Go ahead.
I think this is great. I, I would, one of the things that I think is interesting is this fragmentation. We talked about it just a few minutes ago about, you know, putting all the stuff that it's reachable together so you can make those connections and whatever. And I think that's what, this is so good. Everything has been departmentalized. Like you can have a great department in one thing and not necessarily in the other. So I think this takes us through that. I'm just wondering on operations, I know we have a chief operations officer now, and I know that person reports to you, but does the, is the operational guy or gal, whoever it is, are they, are they, do they have their own team that is ahead of all the various operations? Because what we've been lacking, especially in the last three or so years, maybe a little bit longer, is anybody with a handle on the operational level.
Yes, so, and actually, that, that is an area right now, I, I think I said publicly that when I first started, operations was the one area that was keeping me up at night more than the other areas. And that's just to be honest. I think we had someone in the role that was doing the very best that they could, but there was limited support because there were no individuals in those spaces. And so we have, I'm pretty excited about where they are right now. We have a director, director of transportation, as you know, that does have experience in that area, is, is, is learning kind of where we are and some of the gaps that existed. But even from Monday to today and talking, one of the folks that I was meeting with before I came was our chief of operations and really drilling down on some of the things that we had discussed. And from Monday to today, I already see the difference. And so feeling really positive there. So yes, to answer your question, that, that at the director level, all of those positions are, are, are crafted out. We did not wait, however, until all of those folks showed up before we started looking at the work around what needed to happen to make sure that we were ready for day one. And so the rest of the team really rallied, as they had been doing the whole time. I honor that team as a whole because they have done a lot to just keep everything moving. Those that have been working through, through the operations organization, they've done a lot just to keep us all afloat. But now I think that, you know, everything works better when you have a team, right? And so now you have individuals that are in places, you know, they're flexible in the work that they're doing, they're honoring the team, as we talked about, is so important. And so I would say yes, to answer your question.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think a lot of what you've shown at, shown us today with the data, as well as with this chart here, has been really helpful. And I think that transparency as to where we are as a, as a district is a really big part of how we go to that next level that you were talking about. But I'm wondering, I guess the other part to it for me is, is, are you planning to do some type of reflection period afterwards where we talk about, okay, so this school, here's where our struggles were here? Because I think the other part that we are struggled as a, as a district is that, yes, we'd like to be equitable in how we allocate resources and, but not every school needs the same thing, not every school struggles the same way. And in some levels, we've been doing the same thing for everyone regardless of whether or not they needed it.
Which is not equitable.
Right. And as we move into that lens of being able to hold ourselves accountable and to do those
things, I think that's a, that's that next part, right? That's the next level.
Yes.
So maybe talk a little bit about that.
Sure. So, so the answer is yes, yes, and yes. And, and Jen and I have talked about this quite a bit, and, you know, the, the, the reality is, we're starting, we're, we're at, if I could say, we're at the ground level at this point because we have been, the way, the terminology that we've used is that we've been fractured. We're not broken. The district has done a great job and has done great things for children, but we have been fractured and that all of the, everything that we see points to that, right? But at this point, we're at a point where we're, we're rebuilding in terms of those areas that were fractured. And the way that happens is continuing to go through a reflective process because we're thinking now about what, just from information that we're getting, from, from walking schools, from talking to, to, to staff, to now looking at data. You know, last week with my team, there was a, there was a deep dive for us around academic data. And that becomes another point, right? And so as you're thinking about where we go next, there are some things that are, are coming to the surface that we need to think about as we start looking at the next budget cycle even. And so how we do that? So I would say yes to your question. Ultimately, I believe by next year, thinking about our team, you know, even this will have its own dashboard that'll be easier for us to look at across the board. Right now, we're using it, you know, what looks like an Excel, but it's done through a survey. And so it's continuing to go through that process because we learn as much from our challenges as we do from the things that have been really successful. So we have to unpack that so we know how we don't go that direction again, but also use that to drive, when we say data drives decisions, I say data drives instruction, which is all the same, but instruction is decision, right? It's decisions about what it is.
Thank you. Ben, we ready to move on? Can't hear you. You're muted.
My apologies. I think we're ready to move on. Just saying thank you.
Yeah.
What's that?
I was saying thank you.
The Superintendent for both of those presentations. I think the item we're on to next on the agenda has to do with the Ad Hoc Attendance Boundaries Committee. And I think that the topic related to, to that group for today is just about, it's a timing question. And what I wanted to try to do is, is frame the questions, I understand it, give the Superintendent a chance to share some of the thoughts or questions that were top of mind from her on this issue, and then ask Dr. Moffett to share from her perspective, what are some of the issues that are top of mind for her and the committee on this issue? And then maybe give a chance to just hear from other board members too. But I, I think the issue is, I understand it, is let's assume that the committee wants to recommend at the end of its work, some changes to attendance boundaries for schools. I think the question is, on what timeline would those changes go into effect? And are we talking about changes that would go into effect for fall '23, a year from today, or changes that would go into effect later than that, say, fall '24? I wanted to ask it the Superintendent, I think maybe just share some, some of the questions or trade-offs or pros and cons that were coming up for you and the team? And then I was going to ask Dr. Moffett to, to share perspective from the committee.
Yeah, so I, I, I actually think we had a very productive and enlightening, if you will, meeting today, the ad hoc meeting was today. I think thinking through the process and what we looked at. So what I understood after attending the meeting today is the focus for this part of it is to gather all the information, include the, the community in that information, and really educate, if you will, the administration around what has been so that there is some historical context to what it is that we're talking about. And then from there, determining whether or not there are recommendations that are made. I think the, the, one of the values that I walked away with from today, and I, and I kind of pull out the part around programming is, and you've heard me talk a lot about programming, is I think as we look across our schools, we, one of the next steps for us as an organization is to truly audit what we currently have happening in our school buildings around programming. And so I don't think that that's a conversation that's in isolation from the conversation that was had earlier today. What I think what happened is, as we're going through these cycles and as we're going through the meetings, we're also on the administrative side, going into school buildings, doing audits in schools. So I would imagine by the time we get to about October, or at least our December meeting, we have some full audit information from this is what we found, and based on that, these are some of the recommendations that we would have to begin to converse about even going into next school year. Now, whether that includes change in boundaries, you know, that was, that's something that I think would take further discussion, but I think that there is an opportunity to really continue to engage around both. And I think the way that we talked about it today in terms of that progression where it's not a, an all at once, it's not an all at one time, it may be something that is a staggered approach as we think about it, I think it makes it, it makes it pretty meaningful for the organization. So that was my lens from what I saw and from where I sit, especially after attending the meeting.
Okay, we can't hear you, Ben.
I hear myself, I apologize. To, um, what I want to do is just make sure I was following what you said, Superintendent. So I think I heard you say is that there is important work happening around auditing programming that could dovetail nicely with the work of the committee. Any, any, any pros or cons around long-term timing or just follow the current trend line and that, that feels good to you?
Yeah, I, I don't know that I walked away with, with thinking that, that, and the, the team can kind of update me around this, but I don't know that, and I'm looking at Dr. Moffett because she's the, the leader of the group, but I don't know that I walked away feeling that this was an all or nothing for right now. I think I walked away feeling that, or, or sensing or hearing that this is a, this is our opportunity to gather as many facts as we can, and as we begin to move forward and we're making recommendations. And as we begin to move forward and we're making recommendations for next steps, we're looking to make those recommendations, bringing in all of those parts. I.e. what schools are, you know, what schools are under enroll? Where are our students leaving from the school district, going to other places? What school programs do we have areas where students are not attending our schools? And how do we reengage with those populations? So I really saw it as a, really as a, as a, as a, an opportunity for partnership in going through that. So we're sharing the historical information, but we're also on the other end looking at, this is what we're finding and these are recommendations that we have moving forward. And then, based on that, these are recommendations that we would talk about in terms of even, you know, changes and opportunities for next school year, in a staggered approach. That's kind of what, I didn't, I didn't walk away with feeling that it was an all or nothing right now. So maybe, maybe I'm off on that.
Nope, that's helpful, clarifying. Kareem?
So that was never the intention of the ad hoc committee, is my understanding of it. So I'm not sure.
What was, can I, what was never the intention?
Could be an all or nothing. It was always about impacting, doing some work to impact our budget, to impact programming, to impact transportation, et cetera. I'm going to read to everyone, just that we have, we can level set what the, what the charge of the committee is, per the board meeting April 25th. And I'm going to read this, it says, "Member Murawski moved and Member Jones seconded a motion that the board create an ad hoc committee to work with the administration and the community to reevaluate the district's boundary lines for elementary schools." And we talked about a historical perspective. We also, we got the review from legal counsel. We talked about historically, how did we get here? How we got here was from an evolution of quadrants to a Meridian report, which now the committee members have, and I know the superintendent, right, has as well. And I'm happy to share that with everybody, I think everybody has access to it at one point or another. But there were some things even from that Meridian report that the board, that went to the board from a committee and that the board looked at doing that work done. Which also speaks to how we have historically been, where we have action items that are relevant at the moment and then they don't get active on. So my, Ben asked me to give a timeline, and I've consulted with my colleagues. And we, I think, and I definitely would invite them to share as well, we're, the goal was not to look at, by the end of this year, we're going to be recommending something. That was never the goal. The goal was to analyze and in conjunction and in unison with the community and administration, where are some areas that our boundary lines are really, really causing problems for the district? And with respect to programming, that's one area. With respect to transportation, that's one impact and one influence. We looked at neighborhood lines versus neighborhoods versus district lines. And eventually want to look at some studies on how, how do we get here with this? And what would be more efficient, an efficient use of our charge for fiscal responsibility? And so, from that, I'm not saying that things won't come up, but that's not the intention, that we didn't set out with the goal to this full year come up with a plan to impact 2023, 2024. And so, I'm a little confused on how that got there. But one of the things that I always said, and I've said this again today, I believe that some of this work parallels with what you're already intending to do with respect to auditing the programming, for example. And that could be something that comes back to the committee to look at and with respect to boundary lines for elementary schools. And so, I just think that, I said it earlier, that we can walk and shoot them at the same time. I don't think that things have to be exclusive. Where we're doing work and then we give you something and then you go do work. I think that things can operate in tandem. But I also sincerely believe that the opinion of the community and having community voice sit at that table with a historical perspective and input versus feedback is super significant, as represented by the people that were at the meeting today. We had some people who have been teachers, we've had some people who are community members, and we then we had some current teachers and community members who are very, very interested in this work. We've got principals that watch online, that community people that watch online, because they're very interested. So from a timeline perspective, one of the things that I've suggested is that we, we've boiled it down that our regions are east, west, and central. And that we take a moment to look at each of them individually. And then announce to the community which ones we're focusing on. So that if you live in the west, and we're talking about east this whole entire meeting, you don't have to tune in unless you choose to. But then we can also invite partners to choose in, to join in as well. So that will be some of the things that I bring up. I don't leave on looking at the agenda moving forward. What do we want to talk about, which region would we like to talk about? And then who we should have at the table? I'm going to invite, remember Bolton, Vice President Lynn, Vice President Jones, to interject anything that you've seen or that you'd like to. We've heard the four times, make sure that we're focused.
Do you want to go first?
I'll go real first, fast and furious on that. I think we live by the charge that's been given. And I think that's great that the community people are part of the committee, very frankly. And the most important thing is that we're doing all of this in public. It would be another thing to give a charge to the administration, go figure this out. And that's not the way to do it, especially something as big as what this could be. So I think it's great that we're doing it in public. And the other piece is, even as you use an example from today, the discussion about college prep grades. And some of our schools are called magnets, because allegedly they have college preparatory tracks or something. And really what it was, is that we weren't possibly funding and staffing enough regarding gifted throughout the district. So you were identifying people. So I mean, it's not like there's going to be a deadline where there's this big report, although there may be. It's more like together, we're kind of coming up with why the history is what it is, why we are where we are, and what do we maybe need to do as a result? So I think it's a very good couple of meeting starts. And I think it's, I think it's been helpful to have the superintendent there and the community people there as well. And legal counsel to help us through some of these more demanding kind of questions.
I would like to add, and it's not going to come to any surprise of my colleagues about, in terms of what I'm going to say. And I don't disagree at all with what either have said nor what the superintendent has said. I guess for me, you know, when you form an ad hoc committee, it is time limited. And this feels a little bit like, and this is what I was trying to say this morning, but it feels a little bit like, and I'm going back to, superintendent said, when she first started commenting on this, she said, "When the committee ends the work, and that process includes gathering information, education, administration, and determine if there are recommendations." This process right now, and it could change, I don't know. And I, you know, I'm really trying to follow along with what the charge is. It feels more like a high priority strategic initiative that's moving forward without benefit of that alignment with the administration that we're talking about. Now, we talked a lot about that alignment today. We talked a lot about it. But it feels like that this has gone, and it's growing, because people are talking about it now in the community. So it's growing. And so, my concern is that when people say, well, do we, I mean, if the question is, do we need a plan? I just happen to feel that we do need a plan. That it, there needs to be recommendations that come out of this committee that go to the full board. And that it is decided how administration is going to approach implementation. And it could mean that she works, or the administration aligns itself with the work of the committee periodically. I just do not see the committee doing the work, that, which is what it feels like right now. But, but again.
Nor is at the charge of it either. That was, it was not, it said to work with administration and the community.
Okay, well, I'm just, my perspective, my perspective, again, is that it has to, we have to think in terms of short term, not short term, but a timeframe in which we can make certain recommendations. And I understand that right now, we're in the initial stages of it. But as I said this morning, there's been a lot of things that impacted this. And there's information that I need to go back on and read on. I'm not denying that it's a high priority. What I'm saying is, timing wise, is this the moment for us to do this in as hurried, for lack of a better term, in this hurried of a way, before we have a chance to even hear what other strategic priorities are? Because it's going to affect the budget. So we have to be in alignment with where administration, in terms of their audit, auditing and what all that means. So, yeah, so that's just kind of where I am with it.
Just have a quick question on what you just said. So in terms of the timeframe, what would you recommend if you feel as if this is, shouldn't be a priority right now? I'm just curious, what would you suggest?
I haven't set a timeframe. I'm saying the committee needs to decide that. And I think what we're in now, what we're in now is the initial stage. As the superintendent said, we're gathering information and we're educating administration. We've involved the community. But I'm just foreseeing, and my experience, is that this is blowing up.
Right, and that's always.
And so, the committee needs to decide what that timeframe is.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. I am, I'm really excited that the work is happening. It sounds like there is alignment already, as the motioner. It sounds like there is alignment with the administration and the, the motioner.
Biggest motion maker.
I'm the one, the motioner. I'm a, I'm a emotional guy. Anyway, I'll keep going. I won't. But it sounds like there's alignment, which is great. It sounds like it, this work and y'all's work kind of are seemingly could play well in the same sandbox. I just wanted to say that Ms. Jones is going to love this one. I agree with Ms. Jones. No, I agree, I agree, I agree. I agree in principle with what you're saying. I don't know what that, and I, you know, I don't know what that looks like. And I'm looking at President Lindy, when we spoke about, you know, board priorities going forward. I feel remiss now that I didn't actually add this piece to it. I don't know if this is something, you know, that we check in on. I think recommendations coming out of it are probably something that can happen in the next few months. This is just my opinion, I'm not on the committee. But segmenting it, that was obviously the first I've heard this, because it was talked about, say, I think that's, for whatever it's worth, really, really smart. We're going to focus on west now, we're going to focus on central, we're going to focus on east. I think that's really, really smart. In my brain, this is maybe just because it's clean, feels like a year and a half. It's like six months, six months, six months. I just said that it's not anything sacred at all, but it just, because I, I know what you're saying. And I've only been here going on six years, but I know, I know what you're, yeah, well, you know, but I know what you're saying, and it could, things can, yeah, I get it. But I do think, I do think, and then I'll be quiet, but I do think this is, as you all know, really important. And important enough to put a sunset date on it, to be perfectly honest, so that it doesn't turn into something we just talk about forever.
Right, and that is my point. Yeah.
Yeah, 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 I'm with you.
I think one of the questions that I would have is, as we think about all of this in terms of timing, I would be really interested in what, what asks do we think that we will have moving forward of the leadership team? So if I use as an example for today, and I was involved in deciding when the meeting was going to be. So that's not an indictment of when the meeting was. Dr. Moffett and I talked about when the meetings were going to be scheduled, and so forth and so on. So that's, it has nothing to do with that. But as I thought about it today, you know, we are seven days out from school starting. And I looked up and there were. In the meeting today, for the team that prepared the maps and the information, the data, when we looked at that early on, I was able to share, okay, this is other information that I think would be valuable to that. And I think you may see the difference of what you saw before, when you looked at maps and what you see now. Because I thought that information would be valuable. That is about the extent of what that team can do right now, without additional dedicated resources to do that. So, you know, knowing that this is where we are, we are going through transition, we're focused on getting schools up and running and how we're beginning to look at outcomes for students and all of those things, and filling vacancies and all of that. When we start thinking about what's being given to us, or what may be given to us or asked of us in terms of assignments, I think we have to think about that as well. Because that, whatever we're doing for this phase, if it's not something that we're bringing, right? So you didn't ask me for an audit. An audit is just the way that we understand to do the work, because it's necessary for us to know where we are before we can make recommendations for where we go next. So that's not something that you asked for, but that is something that we need to do so that we can then really provide the kind of information that we're, or what we're recommending in terms of programming. But I do, I would have interest in what are, what kinds of things might we be asked to do so that the board recognizes or accepts and is okay with, whatever time we're taking to do this, there is something else that we're not doing during that time? And I think that's where the question is around timing and timeline. So that would be one of my, one of my questions.
Yeah, if I could just add something, I see, I see. Just to really, I'm sorry?
I'm happy to go after you, I just wanted to register, I had a thought.
Jen also had her hand up. I just wanted to make very short comments about, because I think initially, I don't know. Well, let me not go there. But when I did my homework, to go back and try to read as much from the historical piece, it was very clear to me that we had this conversation, it was part of the strategic plan, we had started acting on it or whatever. But what I have said in this committee is, we experienced COVID. We, this is our third superintendent. So things came to a halt. So picking this up felt a little bit sudden to me, like it just happened. I don't know how, that's not even the issue. And it didn't happen. But I feel very strongly about if we are in fact in a culture shift, we absolutely have to give administration time to get their footing. And that's all I, you know, and this committee can do the work however we decide. But as an ad hoc, I really do, and am suggesting and recommending that we really look at a defined timeline, where we are doing what we say we're going to do initially, to lay the foundation, and then ask, or expect, or recommend kind of what we want at that point. Okay. You were first. Oh, sorry, Ben.
Happy to go after Jen.
So I really wanted to attend this meeting, because years ago, I was responsible for this layout of attendance boundaries. I spent a lot of time there. And I really wanted to go to the meeting, I couldn't, I was on the call with the US Department of Defense over S.R. So I couldn't come. Had I been able to be there, would have strongly recommended that we look at a demographer, because the residents of Cincinnati have shifted, the neighborhoods have shifted. It did it last, 15 years ago. And I'm concerned that we're going to create a street layout guide or attendance boundaries that are good for today, but not three years from now. So, and then that's going to have financial implications, adrenocrine buildings and that kind of stuff. I really wanted to be there to offer that experience and support as we go forward. I apologize if I couldn't be there, but I just wanted to say, I think it would be very short sighted if we didn't invest in, you know, we had, I used to hire, I hired a staff member, her name was Beth Nady. She's now PhD in planning and development, she lives in Cleveland now. But I could have done that job without her expertise and skill. And so, I would highly recommend you giving that.
Yeah, we're in a good place since we just, they completed that 2020 census too. Things are very, very different.
That actually, some of this line of conversation happened in meetings this morning, with a couple of Julie Sellers and Carol Gibbs. Okay, Ben, sorry.
No, I think, I think just, I think Jen's suggestion feels like a wonderful one. And I think the conversation is very helpful to me. I could be wrong about this, but it sounds like there's a nice idea about where we could go on this set of issues, which was that the committee would put together. I think there could be multiple reasons why this is really helpful. I think there could be multiple reasons why this is really helpful, a timeline. You know, Mike had arbitrarily said 18 months. You all may decide you want to recommend something different. But the idea that it be time bound and that there be some recommendations that come at the end. And I think that the beauty of that too is, is it could involve a scope of here are the different meetings we want to have that you can engage with the administration around. You know, maybe that some times of the year are particularly tight on capacity and some are much better. You know, but you all could figure out what you think the right answers to those questions are. I just want to say, I think the, the timeline that Kareem laid out sounds really good to me. Like I'm, I'm cautiously optimistic that we're very close. But that the committee could, could come up with their recommendation on that and then share it with us in a future meeting. Is that what I'm hearing from the group?
Yes, it sounds great, yes.
Great, thumbs up from Brandon, awesome. And it's only two minutes after. And any last call for Superintendent?
Yes, one last call, Rob, if you'll just show the last sheet. And so this is, I just wanted to share this with you in terms of just an update in terms of vacancies across the district really, really quickly. And so Rob is going to pull it up for me. If you'll make that a little bit larger. Can you see it a little bit larger? Awesome, you may have to scroll a little bit.
So just to kind of walk through where we are right now. So the way that we identify core vacancies was at the end of the transfer period, which was April the 4th. So that's kind of where this number comes from. So on April the 4th, we had 201 core vacancies. I'm 201 overall core vacancies and we're calling core English, math, science and social. So if you think about core just to frame that, because I don't know that we used that term terminology to pull out the vacancies previously. So as of today, the core vacancies we have left to fill are 18. So that, and that means the 18 in core, that means that 91% of our core vacancies are filled. And so as we start talking about vacancies, I just want to add that to the conversation. Because as we look overall, I want to share that there are about 3,000 teachers total. But in terms of our vacancies, that's where we are. For our non-core vacancies, same time period from the end of the transfer period, we started with 143. We have 21 left to fill at this point for non-core, all of our electives and specials. So that means 85% of them are filled as of now. So the, the, the other thing, so the total vacancies right now for schools, and you would see that for 18 and 21, gives us 39 vacancies that we have right now. I will say that last week this time, or August the 1st, that number was 65. And then when I sent it to you on Sunday, we, it was 65 minus, it was 20, 65 minus the 26. So that number has, has gone down. So I just want to share that with you. When we talk about positions and total, that's okay. Right here, okay, schools without certificate staff vacancies. So these are, this essentially means that these are schools that don't have any teacher vacancies. There are 39 schools, so that means 60% of our schools have no teaching vacancies. That means the no teacher vacancy. Schools that don't have core vacancies, English, math, science or social studies are 47. So there's 72% that don't have any core teaching vacancy. Okay? Breaking it down even more in terms of the actual individual areas where there are vacancies. Security vacancy, there, there are currently six. We have 175 security positions, six of them are vacant, so that means 3.4 of them are not. 3.4 of them, if you go back, I'm sorry for me, go back please. Okay, right there. This gives you the schools where they are. When you look at these schools, the only one that I have to double check, we throw, I see we left out a T there. The only one that I have to double check is Frederick Douglass. The other schools, these are additional security. So that means they already have a security in their school. These are additional security positions that are in their school building. So I, I don't want you to look at this as they have none. For example, Walnut Hills has one vacancy, but I believe they have eight security personnel. I'm just using that one as an example. Okay, we'll continue to scroll down. We can stop right here. Total custodial vacancies, this is one of the areas that I'm truly proud of. When we, when at the beginning of July, we had 45 custodial vacancies. We are down to 13.5. Because, and I'm happy about that. And so we were able to, when I met with the team, we were able to talk about how do we get this number down? They gave some strategies for how we thought we could do that. We worked in partnership with the civil service administration. They gave us some leeway in terms of that. So, and one of the ways that we were able to do it is they gave us some leeway. So the, the civil service exam, they give us 120 days before those staff members have to pass the civil service. We can help them get it passed in 120 days. Yes, right? So we're continuing to come down in this number and we're continuing to, to hike. In terms of our par vacancies, you know that that number was around 200. We're down to 75 par vacancies. Okay, we want to be at zero, but this is where we are right now. And our food services, service vacancies, same, that's always a large number for us. We're down to 37 food service vacancies. So I want to share that. It will go, keep going down for me? Okay, this tells us, so those 18 vacancies that I talked about before, this is the, and I'll, I'll send this to you as well so that you'll have it. But the 18 vacancies that I talked about before, this tells you where those 18 vacancies are. So it gives the school for where the vacancies are. If you scroll down. Great, if you go back up to the top for me to the right. We do have another strategy that we're working in with these 18 vacancies. We've been working in partnership with the union, have some positions that can go into these vacancies because we want to make sure that we have teachers in front of students on day one. And so that's the most important. And that starts by looking at some of the roles that we have at the district level. And so making sure, making sure that we have teachers in front of students. So that's been a work in progress, we're working through it. So if you begin to hear it, you know, I can't say every decision that we make as a child's face, but when it's time to make those decisions about children, we don't. I'm just kind of sharing that with you. And the last, I think one of the questions was around resignations and where we were in terms of resignations. So we did resignations for last year, from last year up until this time, same date. There were 124 resignations. And right now, from the, from the, and this number, we did it at the first, but that was still in, in, in partnership with the beginning of the, with the end of the transfer. Transfer period was 4-4 this time, but we did it just for consistency at the same time. If we go back to 4-4, we'll see if there was something different. But right now that will be 156 and these are just teaching, teaching, teaching resignation. So just wanted to share this, didn't know if you had any questions for me. But I know that there have been some questions around vacancies where we are with vacancies. I tried to give some updates, but this gives you even more.
I think it's, I think it's great. And if you can check with the city about crossing guards.
I will follow up.
That would, that'd be important. And then the other piece, of course, is the, the crossing guards and also checking as the law requires that checking the bus, the yellow bus stops. And, because that didn't get done until very late in the year. So we were out of compliance, but that's, that's great. Readjourning.
Anything else, Ben?
Thank you, everybody. We'll see you soon. See you Monday.
Meeting adjourned.
If I can, I want to pass out that resolution.